Council meeting of the city of Elgin, Texas, together on October 27th, 2020 at 6:01 PM. And we'll go in order by ward, starting with Ward 1 on roll call.
Vincent here.
Bagan here.
Thomas is here.
Dennis here. Oh, there's.
Sorry, everyone mute. This is Ariaga here.
The gum last, Bracer here.
And Cannon here. I'm so curious to certify that we have a quorum. Please let the record reflect that Councilmember Lopez will not be here tonight. He was unable to attend. He let me know about that yesterday. Do I hear a motion to excuse?
So move it, Vincent.
Second, Dennis.
Okay, we've got a motion by Councilmember Pinson and a second by Councilmember Dennis. We'll call for a vote. Mayor?
Pinson, yes.
Baby, yes.
Dennis, yes.
Brager, yes.
Ariaga, yes.
On Thomas, yes.
Cannon, yes. And that passage unanimous, let the record reflect, Councilmember Lopez is excused. That'll bring us to the invocation. Mayor, could you like to lead us in that, please?
All right, let us pray. Father who art in heaven, Lord, we come to you with bowed heads and humble hearts. Lord, we thank you for the many blessings you bestowed upon us. Thank you, Lord, for blessing us to live in Texas where it's all the seasons in one day. Thank you, dear Lord, for this, those that are present in this meeting. Bless, um, bless those that are absent for whatever reason. These are the blessings we ask in Jesus's name. Oh, I'm sorry. I pray your blessings upon this meeting, blessed to be what you have to be. Bless us to be decent and in order. These are the blessings we ask in Jesus's name. Amen.
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 Thank you. Has anybody signed up for public comment?
Uh, no, Mayor, didn't get any.
And that'll take us to the city manager's report. Go ahead, Tom.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we just wanted to slide in here, a quick conversation. We've had a couple of, uh, of comments and questions about our upcoming holiday events. As council, everyone's well aware, we've had a rough year this year. Uh, like all cities, we couldn't able to accommodate our traditional events. And, uh, we actually haven't had any this year that what we're used to do. And this past, uh, what would have been Hog Eye and looking toward the, um, through the end of the year, unfortunately, it doesn't look like, um, uh, things are going to be any better as far as us having the public confidence to, uh, to pull off some of these Christmas events so that we're traditionally occur here in Elgin. So we just wanted to make you aware of that, make sure there weren't any questions. Um, I think it's important to note that we, um, that there hasn't been any event, uh, like this, that the city has made a decision about canceling. In every case, the, uh, the organizers of the event made that decision on their own. We continue to try to accommodate and work with folks. And, and we think in virtually every case, it's been a situation where, uh, I think we could find a way to accommodate them, uh, here locally. But, but, uh, everyone struggles with, uh, finding a way to, uh, to also conform to, uh, the current mandates from the governor's office about, uh, COVID protections. But actually, Amy Miller has been, uh, working on, uh, with the groups from, uh, uh, the volunteer fire department. In fact, this is a copy of an email she got today, uh, that we had tried to work through some issues with the group. But they came to the conclusion themselves that they just wouldn't be able to, uh, to do something safe for the community as much as they wanted to. Uh, and then we've also, um, had a couple of questions about, uh, the traditional nativity scene that we have, uh, downtown. And I'll just let Amy jump in here and, uh, tell you a little bit about what she's been working on. But this is mainly make sure no one has any questions about this or any feedback for us about either one of these situations. Amy?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Good to see everybody virtually tonight. Um, so we have this email from the volunteer fire department, uh, related to the Christmas parade. That was traditionally held on the first Saturday, would have been December 5th. Uh, another event, um, held on that weekend is a live nativity performance by St. Peter's Lutheran Church. St. Peter's and Pastor Sam Brandon have been in touch with me. And they are considering what some options might be, uh, but they have not made a decision yet, um, related to whether or not to do that event. And this is, of course, brand new information, um, that will, I'm sure will impact their, uh, their decision making as well in terms of the Christmas parade, uh, not being held this year. Uh, in current events coming up this weekend with Halloween, uh, we have received a number of questions about, um, Halloween celebrations. And, uh, again, in working with our partners, um, uh, the Safe Trick or Treat event that's traditionally been held downtown is not going to be held this year. The volunteer fire department and First Baptist Church, as well as many businesses and organizations in the community are, are partners in that. But those three entities worked together as the primary, um, organizers and participants in it and determined that it was not going to be feasible in the current circumstances. But we do have a pulse sweep of other activities happening related to. And, and this is just things that the city, um, has some involvement in, or a number of, uh, kind of neighborhood things that folks are doing as well. Um, we did issue some information last week and this week from the Travis County, Austin Travis County Health Authority that offered some guidance just related to thinking about as you are celebrating Halloween or Dia de los Muertos. The, there's a range of things that one can do. And some of those are lower risk and some of those are higher risk. And it all depends on, you know, your family's situation and your circumstances. But, um, we shared that out last week via our news flash and our social media, um, channels. And then, um, had that out again this week too. So these are things that we have coordinated as alternative celebrations. And, uh, we hope that folks will come, take advantage of and participate in as many of them as they can. And, uh, and there are other things, um, going on as well.
Thanks, Amy. Uh, Mayor, if I could just add that the, um, and Amy, to make sure I'm correct about this, we, um, uh, our friends, social media, again, I think, uh, I'll get some confusion, a little bit of confusion started about the nativity scene situation. But it is one event and frankly, um, may have a better chance of, of occurring, uh, than these others. The biggest problem like with the, uh, the fire department parade was the parade itself. The fact that the parade, any parade would require blocking of streets, congregations of people, way more difficult to control something like that. As far as, the only thing, uh, the organizers need to do for the nativity scene is, is to simply submit a permit to utilize the park. And, uh, like other community events, uh, we would presume that they'd probably request a fee waiver from the city council. And so we've spelled that out for them. But, but, uh, that's really the only issues for us, right, Amy? They, they just need a permit and, and, uh, if they want the fees waived, just submit that to council. So there's, everything else, we're trying to support whatever they want to do. Correct?
Yes, we had a, a good exchange with Pastor Brandon and provided him all the information about, uh, the, the operating guidelines under the governor's guidance for outdoor events, uh, which essentially to address face coverings and to encourage social distancing. That can be done with Sine. We've had a couple other, uh, events that recently that have done that successfully and had very, um, strong participation from their participants in following that guidance. And, uh, and the park rental fee, uh, can of course be requested, uh, to be waived through city council. And we provided that information, um, to Pastor Brandon.
So we're just basically waiting to hear from them. So, um, as soon as we hear more from, from them, we'll, we'll pass it along. So I just want to, I don't know if anybody has any questions for Amy or I about, about anything to do with any of that. Now we all want to make sure that Amy's still recovering from not having Hog Eye this year. So she's had a couple stressful weeks here to, uh, to accept that not happening. But we're moving on to these other things.
Make sure you get your shirts and your face coverings at various businesses downtown.
I'm really more interested in how Alan has handled not being involved with Hog Eye.
You cannot imagine the celebration if this happened.
He was always such a joyful participant.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you for that info, Amy. And, uh, Steph, appreciate that.
Uh, other than that, Mayor, just again, our next meeting will be on November 10th. Don't forget, uh, we moved that one back to the 10th and then, uh, maybe the 24th. We'll have to see, uh, um, we can plan on the 24th. But that's the Tuesday before the Thanksgiving holidays. So I don't know if that'll be a problem for anybody. But, uh, but then by December, well, our target is December 1st is on the regular schedule. So, so we've been kind of off schedule here for a couple of months, but we'll get back on in December. And that's all I had, Mayor, unless anybody had any.
Well, just a point of clarification, the, that meeting would have been moved from October 3rd rather than November 3rd in the parentheses there. I know Sue wanted to say it, so I just beat her to the punch. Okay, any questions, Council? All right, is that all you got, Tom?
That's all I've got tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay.
I do have a question. We'll, we'll do the canvassing of votes and everything in those regular meetings?
On the 10th? Yes, we're, we're anticipating, um, currently, remember the canvassing of the votes has that, um, not less than three days, no more than 11 window that you have to canvas the votes. But, uh, the, the key to that is that, that, that window starts when, uh, we get the certified results, uh, from the election officials. And if you remember last time, it took us another day or two to get those results from Travis County as opposed to Bastrop. So, so that, we think the 10th hopefully will hit in the middle of that window. So we can plan on the 10th. But yeah, it's a point to be made that if, and you know, depending on which news report you read, this year's election, who knows when we'll get the final results, the final, final official result. So that could move that date of the 10th. We could go ahead with the regular business meeting of the old council on the 10th and then have to do the canvassing on a different date. So, but yeah, I would, I, I think you can write it in with a dark pencil, but I would still write in November 10th as a pencil, uh, it's all going to depend on, if we want that meeting to be the meeting where we canvass the votes, it, it could change. That's your question? Is that what you're?
Well, that would change, that would change that.
I'm sorry, I just know sometimes we had to schedule a different meeting in to take care of that. So I was, this whole year's messed up.
It is, and it just, it failed this year. That, the 10th might work and we're hoping it will work. But, but you're right, we, we very well may have to have a special meeting if, depending on when we get those results.
Typically, Election Day falls somewhere on May 5th, uh, through 7th. And, uh, and so there's always a council meeting right before that. And then, and then after election, we, we, uh, usually the, the whole agenda was, we did canvassing and, you know, mayor pro tem and, uh, new council members, all that stuff that next day, um, or that next meeting after that. But I think we're just going to try to shoot, shoot for getting it all done that day. And worst case scenario is we have to call Canvas, you know, a week later, a special meeting or something like that.
Yeah, that'll be the plan, to get it all done the same day. I believe we can do that.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, well, that will, uh, conclude, uh, our business for, um, the regular meeting. We're going to adjourn, uh, recess and then adjourn into executive session. But we will need to come out back into regular, um, the open meeting, uh, to act potentially. So at this time, I'm going to recess the regular meeting at 6:16. And, uh, if we could have Charles, um, stay on the, uh, the stream, um, stay in the meeting just for a minute. And Tom and staff, y'all are all free to go. Do we need to do the same thing where Michael calls me and all that?
Right, Michael, you on there? Is that the plan?
Okay, we will reconvene the regular session at 7:07 PM. And I will entertain a motion for, based on our discussions within executive session, I'll entertain a motion to increase city manager position of city manager pay to 170,000 base pay per year, all other things being constant.
Ramon Tolu.
Brazier second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Gonzalez, second by Councilmember Brazier. Is there any other discussion? And I will call for a vote, Juan.
Gonzalez, yes.
Cannon, yes.
Pennson, no.
Nega, yes.
Dennis, yes.
Brazier, yes.
Ariaga, yes.
All right, that passes with a vote of six to one. And it passes with a vote of six to one, thank you council. And I suppose there's a, I should have called for announcements before, does council have any announcements? Michael, do you have any announcements? Okay, all right then, we will adjourn at 7:08 PM. Okay, thank you council for this extra time, I appreciate it, and I'll be getting that evaluation out to y'all.